Okay. Let's get this city council meeting in order. Welcome to the Montclair City Council. And of course, what are we all excited about? Anybody know it's Dodger? Oh, there we are. Dodger blue. So I hope you guys are wearing your blue out there. We'll be wearing our blue because we're going to beat those Yankees. All right? Hopefully no Yankee fans in the audience tonight. So, we're going to begin with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. And I'm going to ask the city clerk to introduce those two individuals.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Josh Matlock of Bethany Baptist Church. And the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Lopez.
Perfect. However you want, as long as the quote is correct.
All right. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this evening, that we can come here together. And as all people who are here to work for the betterment of this city. And we thank you for this great city that we can be a part of in so many different ways. And we thank you for all the people that you have provided to help lead and look over and look after this city, God, and take care of this place, to be a steward of a city that is really yours, that belongs to you, God. And so may your kingdom, may your reign be over us, here we pray. And Father, Lord, I pray for this upcoming election here in the city and in our nation. And so all the things that are coming, there's so much polarization and division, Lord, I pray that you would help us come together with peace and unity to do what is best. And, Lord, we trust that you will oversee all things. Lord, we know you establish kings, and so we pray that you would do that and you would take care of all things, that we would just trust you with it all. And, Lord, bless this night. Pray for wisdom for those who govern tonight, that you would give them. And I pray. Amen.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of our great flag. May we always remember those who died to preserve it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, our God, invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can I please have roll call?
Member Lopez?
I'm here.
Member Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Roux?
Present.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
I'm here.
And Mary Dutre.
Present. Okay. And next is presentations, but we're going to change this a little bit. We're going to start with code enforcement first, and then we'll go with I U A's update. So I'm going to ask the council members to join me here at the bottom. And can I get all the code enforcement officers to join me as well here? Who's going to accept this award, Gabe? Gabe is, no, you guys are going to accept this award. You're going to accept the award because you did a good job on Saturday. Come on over here next to me. Gabe can go on the sidelines here because, you know, everybody thinks he's important. But obviously, this week is known as the Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And I just want to recognize this unit here. They are really doing a lot of work in Montclair. Don't get a whole lot of credit, I think, from the residents. Sometimes residents feel as though nothing's happening, and they're actually doing stuff. And I just want to pinpoint last Saturday where we had a neighborhood cleanup on Oakland between Holt and Trax. It's been an area that we have a lot of issues in. And so this past Saturday, the code enforcement team, along with volunteers, came out to clean up this neighborhood, to clean up the areas next to the channel, the areas next to the railroad, graffiti. We removed weeds, debris, all sorts of stuff, painted fences, and really tried to bring some pride to the homeowners, to let the homeowners know, one, they have a right to live in a beautiful neighborhood, and, two, really let them know that we haven't forgotten about them. So we were going to continue to focus on that neighborhood. But you guys do a lot. I know you guys, another area you guys are heavily involved in is in our homeless population here in Montclair, and not just try to enforce, but attempt to assist these folks, get these folks into services, shelter. And so that's greatly appreciated and obviously is greatly needed, not just in this city, but obviously in this region. So, I just want to recognize you again. On behalf of the Montclair City Council, myself, we want to proclaim this week as the Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. And I'm going to give this to Officer Ortiz. So she's going to receive this proclamation for all the hard work she did, that she did, So thank you very much. And you guys can stay if you want, or you can go home and watch. There's no Dodger game to watch. You can go home, do something else. For you to leave, can you introduce all the officers, their names, please? If you go to the mic, if you don't mind doing that. Here, here. Take this, so this makes sure people on TV or virtually, I can hear you.
Absolutely. From our left over there, we have Officer Goodrich, Officer Romansky, Officer Ortiz, Officer Hargit, and Elaine. Elaine, help me with your last name, so I don't screw this up. Odie. Our new administrative specialist secretary, which has been a lifesaver. So, and, you know, I would like to say that what makes this city unique is the support we get from the city manager down to the department heads, to the mayor, to city council. I think this really makes this city very unique. You know, you can say that it's teamwork, but in this city, it really does have a whole new meaning. There's buy-in across the board. It's greatly appreciated. We feel it. So I want to thank everybody for having that mentality and realizing that it takes a village to solve community problems out there. So, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Gabe. Okay. So now we have the presentation by the Inland Empire Utilities Agency. And Joe Manager Shavazi Desmuka will do the presentation. I apologize if I... Desmush. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dutre, members of the council. Ed, great to see you all. It's my pleasure to provide a brief update on what's going on at Inland Empire Utilities Agency and what we're doing in this region when it comes to water, wastewater and recycled water. I'd also like to start off by introducing, I'm joined today by our board president, Marco Thule. And President Thule will also say a few words after my brief remarks. Just as a reminder, I U A is a municipal water district. We were formed almost 75 years ago. And our first responsibility was to ensure that there was an adequate supply of imported water provided to this area. We are one of the 26 member agencies of Metropolitan Water District of Southern California. That's the nation's largest water district. Their job is to literally move water from the Colorado River over 200 miles to the west. And they were instrumental in helping creating Southern California. They also serve a role as being the largest customer on the state water project system or the state California aqueduct. And that's important, especially in this area, as I'm going to describe. In addition to our role providing imported water, which currently supplies about one-third of the supply for this region, through a contract and now ordinance, we're also a wastewater partner when it comes to collection, treatment and recycled water for all the sewage for almost a million people in this region, including the city of Montclair. One of the things that this region had tremendous foresight about three decades ago is to recognize that sewage is not in fact a waste, but something that can be recycled. And today, this region, thanks to the partnership that we have with many of the retailers here, recycles 100% of the water that goes down the sewer systems. In addition to that, through partnerships with the county of LA, we're also able to recycle 100% of the biosolids that come down the drains. And biosolids is just a fancy word for all the poop from our area. We turn that all into a high-quality compost, very unique, not only in the region, but I would argue in the state and the nation. So today, I just wanted to briefly talk about three updates in those three areas, starting with imported water. Montclair, working with your partner, Amontavista Water District, who provides your potable water and recycled water, is part of the Water Facilities Authority, one of three major customers that buy imported water from us, and we get that from Metropolitan Water District. A few of the big initiatives that we've been working on are not only addressing some of the rate adjustments that have been needed. As a result of the work that our staff, our region put in, we've seen quite minimal rate increases when it comes to the untreated water that that Joint Powers Authority purchases. In addition to that, one of the challenges we have in this area is we are the only one of those 26 member agencies of Metropolitan that spans six counties that only buys untreated state water project supplies. And that has a lot of benefits. It's really good quality, but it also comes with some challenges. When there's a drought in the state, it has a direct impact on us. So Metropolitan, with the support of the 25 other agencies, has been very helpful in increasing the amount of flexibility we have in the infrastructure. And what that means is the water that we get from the California aqueduct, some of that water goes to a big reservoir in Riverside County called Diamond Valley Lake. And right now, Metropolitan's investing tens of millions of dollars to allow us plumbing access to it. But unlike plumbing fixes in your house, these costs upward of $20 and $30 million to do, and the whole region is really chipping in to help ensure our reliability. And that's really our focus now. So that next time we have a drought within the state, we can not only rely on the limited supplies available from the aqueduct, but we can also access those stored supplies. One of the other unique qualities about I U A is that we partner with the Chino Basin Water Master in a number of ways, including working on recycled water, groundwater recharge, as well as the planning and coordination for a number of projects that help get more water in the ground. I'm going to talk a little later about that when it comes to our recycled water/storage program. But I'd like to talk a little bit about what our focus is on the wastewater side. And I want to focus on two areas specifically. One where we've seen improvement, but we need to work together to continue to do more, and that's ensuring the right things go down the sewer system. When we see things going down like wipes or things that can't be removed through our traditional treatment processes, to actually plug up our pumps and pipes and create significant maintenance and ultimately rate challenges for our respective customers. We've done a great outreach program, working together as a region, to reduce the kind of things going down the sewers. In addition to that, we're still in one of those few areas in Southern California that's actually growing. And so we are completing our final expansion of our major water recycling facility sewage treatment plant in Chino called the RP-5 Expansion. So I'd like to invite you all and your staff, Ed, to come down and see the progress of that. While it is meant for the growth that's taking place in Chino and Ontario and Fontana, all our systems are connected and provide this strong flexibility in terms of handling the sewage. Finally, I want to talk about a major initiative we're working on, which is a combination of a compliance or water quality project on the wastewater side, an ability to expand our recycled water production, and ability to store it in the groundwater basin, and that's called the Chino Basin Program. This program right now is envisioned as a project that'll do all three of those things. And if we're able to perform and use that water at the right time with the state that invests over $200 million in the system, different versions of the project ultimately allow us to recycle more of the water that's currently being sent down the Santa Ana River for free to our partners down in Orange County, where they enjoy this very high quality of water. We would like to retain more of that reliability up here in the Chino groundwater basin to help secure the reliability for our customers. So we continue to develop this project to see if it's the right direction for I U A and the region. Like I mentioned before, we've had a great partnership with our retail agencies, but also specifically the Chino Basin Water Master. A lot of great things going on there, but it's a good opportunity for me to, once again, introduce our board president, Marco Thule. And he has some comments, even getting into the details of our partnership with the Water Master.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm Marco Thule, president of the Inland Empire Utilities Agency. And I want to highlight some of the things that Shabaji did touch on, and water. How do we get water in this region? So 30% of our water comes from the state water project, the aqueducts. 70% of that is local. One thing that he highlighted that's really important is we are able to recycle 100% of our water. That doesn't mean that we're able to capture and beneficially use 100%. But right now, a large portion of that water is going down to Orange County for free to use to benefit us, the residents in the Inland Empire, offset their costs. So that's led us to create, look at other opportunities of storage, including programs like the Chino Basin Program. But this year at I U A, we certified something called the OBMP, the Optimal Basin Management Plan. So that took our basin from 710,000 acre feet up to 900,000 acre feet. So underneath us, we have, we're going to have up to 900,000 acre feet that we can use drought and use for our beneficial use. And just to give you an idea, one acre foot of water can supply about three households per year. So it's very, very, very beneficial to us here in this region, especially in times of drought, when Metropolitan and the state has said, hey, you don't get your 100% allocation, we're going to cut it down to 5%, do what you have there locally. So what we've done here is phenomenal. In addition to that, we partnered with Chino Basin Water Master to look at these opportunities. And one of the things that Shabaji had mentioned was the Chino Basin Program. We know as we start to develop and build here, we're creating challenges to that groundwater, including high salinity. So we're looking for ways to kind of treat that so that it's ready to serve for our residents here directly. The interesting thing about this region, as Shabaji highlighted, is that this region, according to the Castin Multifamily Report out of the USC Lusk Real Estate Center, says that this region is going to grow by 30%. So it's going to grow over the next 20 years by 30% at a time that the state is telling us we have to reduce our water consumption by 30%. So we have a double-edged sword here. Hey, cut your water usage, but also grow and grow your region at the same time. It's one of the few regions that's actually growing, and so is Orange County. But we've done a phenomenal job here with conservation. We've gone from average of 220 gallons a day per capita down to 160. So that's all in collaboration with our partners. That's all in collaboration with the city, with Amontavista Water District being one of them. All of us looking to find ways to conserve and to better serve our consumers. So tonight, I just want to come out and just give a high-level overview of what we're doing as an agency to prepare for droughts, to be prepared for the next 20 years, and to better serve our residents. So thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Yes, Councilman Lopez.
A question, President Thule. You stated that regionally, we're expected to have 30% growth. What was the timeframe that you were expecting, that 10 years?
Over the next 20 years. And a big portion of that growth is slated to occur over the next 10 years, but certainly over the next 20. And the regions that we expect to grow the most are in Fontana and into Ontario, which is part of the I U A service territory.
And the state requirements for us to cut back, I know Amontavista did a presentation to us about a month ago. When are those state mandates to cut back supposed to trigger?
I believe early 2030, 2032, I think, is when we're supposed to go cut on the indoor per capita usage from 55 gallons to 42 gallons. Okay. Perfect.
Not far away. All right. No, I appreciate the information from both of you gentlemen. Thank you for that. Sounds like the region has its work cut out for us, definitely. Hopefully we get some rain and no drastic heat spells.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, obviously, I mentioned the Chino Basin Program, and there's been a lot of discussion on that in the last three, four years among the policy committee, which I serve on, and I think some of the cities have some reservations, in addition to the Amontavista Water District. But we'll see how that pans out, and I realize it's still a revolving document. And then obviously, there's the advanced treatment plant, which is an important component of the recycling water, cleaning up the pollution in the, into the basin. And I know you're working on that plant as well. The, and then, of course, where's the fair share between the Chino Basin Program and then the sewage rate payers? So obviously, work on that. Question I have on the sewage, the wastewater fee adjustments. I know that we, you know, it's passed through, so obviously, I U A adopts it through the recommendation of the policy committee, but then it's passed through the cities, and the cities are the ones that have to collect it. I believe last year was 5%, if I'm correct. Can you give a little update, the study? I know there's a study being done for future wastewater fees.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Right now, we're working with your staff and a number of the other stakeholders in the region to conduct a five-year rate study. With I U A, we have a number of different programs, like I mentioned, imported water, wastewater and recycled water, the three major ones. And so we have, it's important for us to make sure we allocate those costs properly. Right now, we're in the process of working on that five-year, I'd say, five-year rate plan. I'd say we're about a third of the way through that. And so ultimately, that's going to result in, at the policy committee, which specifically addresses the wastewater side of it, that's where we'll bring the updates forward there. We do have the rates covered for the next year, so we need to make sure there's rates provided by July 1st, 2025.
Thank you. And obviously, this council just did a Prop 218 hearing last August, which included the wastewater fees. Councilman Roux?
Yes, thank you. First of all, thank you to both of you for being here tonight. I'll take a moment in my other life, where I'm on the Santa Ana Regional Water Quality Control Board. Thank you for letting us use your facilities for some of our meetings. And I would urge everybody here to go out and see the facility in Chino with all the drought-tolerant landscaping. It's perfect. Which brings me to what I, you know, is very near and dear to me. It is conservation, and I appreciate you bringing that up because we need to conserve more. I see so many areas around us where we're planning for the future, and it includes lush green landscaping. It needs to be drought tolerant, and we can use all the recycled water we want. That's still expensive water that can used for something else. So I really appreciate if people could take a tour of your facility and see what's going on. I wanted to mention something that the public probably doesn't know, and involves I U A, is how we can use the wastewater to detect infectious diseases. During the peak of COVID, they were able to look and do a lot of projecting that some of the numbers reported were much lower than what we were seeing in the wastewater stream. You're also seeing in some of the wastewater stream, things like PFAS, which we know we've got to work to clean up in the future. I know, President Thule, you and I have talked several times about that. Emerging contaminants such as lithium from the car batteries, just things that we wouldn't think about, and we can detect it. So thank you for your work with the different chemists and scientists in the water industry to make sure that those things are discovered early on, so we can, especially with infectious diseases, be able to get ahead of it and look at what's there. It's really amazing what the work you do. And again, not just urging everybody to see the drought-tolerant garden, talk to you about all the work you're doing in other areas. So many different aspects of water going unknown because the public, we are busy, but as elected officials, we should be talking more about this. So I appreciate it. Urge everybody to talk to you all, and I'll continue to reach out and talk to you because, you know, I love the water industry and what we're doing. And even in Orange County, we, you know, we send the water, they do need it. Recycled water is a part of it. Maybe in the future, D-SAL, but D-SAL is about 300, 400 times more than what we would pay if we conserve water. So I appreciate it, and thank you.
Councilmember Roux, I know you didn't ask a question, but I did want to address the conservation topic. And first, thank you for your leadership on the regional board. We'll always argue the Santa Ana watershed is the best managed and best regulated region in the state. I did fail to mention our priority and our focus on conservation. And one of those programs that we're offering, working with Metropolitan, is to get rebates to our collective customers on taking out those lawns and replacing them with drought-friendly California native. And so if any of the residents are interested in that, whether it's the Montclair staff, Amontavista Water District, or I U A, we're there to help. Thank you.
Thank you. And also, thank you for participating in, oh, wow, one water, one watershed. It's so important to us.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll go to public comments. It's an opportunity for members of the public to speak on any of the consent calendar items on the agenda. You have five minutes for total, or if you wish to speak on anything else that's not on the agenda, you also have five minutes. And I want to ask the city clerk if she's got any speakers.
So we have the representative from Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office, Ruby Long, on the line.
Yeah. Ruby Long. Okay, Ruby. Where is Ruby Long? Oh, she's old.
Good evening.
Ruby, how you doing?
I'm good, thank you. How are you?
I'm fine.
I just have one announcement today, and that is that on Saturday, November 2nd, we're going to be holding our Veterans Claims Event. And it's going to be held at our district office in Chino Hills. It's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And this year, we are asking that if you're going to want to see a veteran service officer to make an appointment, so that everybody can be seen. So if you did want to, you know, have your state claims or benefits or anything checked out by them or, you know, help you in any kind of way, please call us and we'll go ahead and register you. If you just want to receive the San Bernardino County Military Veterans ID, you do not need an appointment for that, so you can just go ahead and walk in for that. And please bring your DD form, 214. And if you have any questions, if you need help registering or anything, please contact our office. And that is it. We'll also have some resources there. That'll be in attendance, the Assessor Recorder Clerk, Frontside Military Outreach, Veterans Legal Institute, and Rebel Ranch.
All right. Appreciate it, then. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
Good day, Ruby. Bye.
Bye.
Okay.
Our first speaker in the audience for a public comment is Carolyn Raft.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Mr. Starr, Diane, and city employees and I want to comment on a flyer. I want to clarify a misconception that was sent out this weekend about Councilwoman Lopez. First of all, I want to say is that Councilwoman Johnson and I had no knowledge or involvement in any of the process of putting the flyer together. We gave no ideas or anything else to contribute. It was just as much of a surprise to her and I as it was to maybe some of you. I know Councilwoman Johnson, as well as myself, do not send out negative literature about anyone that may be running against us. That's not now or ever the practice of either of us. Our flyers, our mailers have always been about us, what we have accomplished or wish to accomplish on the city council, and not, as I stated, about someone else. Are and always have been truthful and honest about who we are. We are willing to answer truthfully any questions that someone might bring before us. I felt this was a need to bring this forward, to clear up this misconception. Unfortunately, some people do get the wrong idea, and they guess, make guesses as to who they think is behind it, and unfortunately, sometimes they are wrong. And therefore, that is why I wanted to clarify this miss, this wrong. Okay? Thank you, and God bless.
Our next speaker is Xavier Mendez, and he wants to speak on four items on the agenda.
Full agenda, then.
All right. You guys ready? Now, just a few things. The first thing was C1 agreements regarding Agreement 24-79, the graffiti tracker. Just had a quick question regarding it. Just wanted to know if, I just remember in the past, you know, Public Works, we would use that program quite a bit to identify taggers through their gang tag or their moniker, which is their name, and just didn't know if we were still using it for that, if they're using it just for the police department. It just helped us to keep track of, you know, who the taggers were out there. Didn't know if we're still entering that data like we used to. The next question was on Agreements 3, about the renovation and restoration. to. The next question was on Agreements 3, about the renovation and restoration of the City of Montclair Monument sign, just right outside these windows. It's great to see this being done because that sign has looked bad for years. And I'm glad to see it being done.
Sure.
Oh, way before I worked here.
Okay.
Yeah, before I was born. So, which, I know it's close, but anyways, I'm happy to see it being refurbished. It'll be, it'll look nice. I'm sure it will.
You're going to rode your bicycle down here and try to fix it during your free time?
Yeah, I'm going to jump it, actually. I'm going to set up a ramp and I'm going to jump over it. No, no, I'm not. I don't need Brian chasing me down and catching me. But anyways, the next thing was under D resolutions, 243458, which is regarding the resource recycling.
D1. Item D1, Xavier.
What?
D1, you're speaking of?
Yeah. So basically, I know we're, this is just to authorize submitting an application for grant funds for solid waste disposal, for the solid waste disposal program, hoping to get at least $250,000. So that way, we'd have $500,000 to do some cleanup work. If we don't get this $250,000, say we only get $50,000, will the city be putting out the additional $450,000 for this? Because I know that it's coming out of the lease revenue bonds. And I just wanted to know if we were planning to go that route or if we had other solutions for that. So that was just a question on that. And then also wanted to bring up about communications. We haven't had any Public Works communications in a while. And just wanted to know maybe if the Public Works Director or somebody could just report on what's going on with city staff at the Public Works, in the Public Works Department. I know that if we get that one fund, we're going to be doing some cleanup. But I don't know if we're going to do it in-house or they're going to contract it out. I know right now, the Parks Department or Division is still being contracted out. And are there any plans on bringing that back in-house again? Or are we just going to leave it as contract? So just wondering about that. And then the last thing is, as you know, I'm running for city council. And I've been out knocking on a lot of doors. And one of the things that has been brought up quite a bit, and it's kind of funny that we're talking about it tonight with the I U A and talking about more conservation coming up in the future, that was a lot of the residents were asking, they're like, why are we having to pay so much more in water, trash, sewer? And I explained to them that the 218 hearing letter went out and nobody replied to it. I mean, I think we only had like three or four emails that came through and maybe three or four people spoke on it. And I think you have to have over 50% of response in order to not pass it through. I said, nobody talks about it. Unfortunately, nobody comes in. But some of the questions they were asking, and that was, you know, here we are, we're saving a lot of water by doing better, but then all of a sudden, now they're not receiving the funding that they did before. So then they raise our rates for us saving water. And if we're in such a drought, why are we continuing to build hundreds and hundreds of apartments that are going to require hundreds and thousands of gallons of water to be used if we're in a drought? So that's what people want to know is why are we building more housing if we have no water? So the guys left, I know that know all the answers. But it was just a question. I know that a lot of people asked the same question. And that is all I have for today. Thank you, guys.
Okay, no problem. Next time, if you want to put two cards in, what other items you want to talk about? And then just separate one, just general items.
Oh, okay.
Austin was general. So just want to let you know, so I'm not cheating you. So, all right.
And the next speaker?
Yeah. And then, I don't know, Ed, if you can answer the questions now or at the end of the public comments, Xavier's questions, if you have an answer to. Ed?
Yeah, I will try and go through them. The first one was in relation to item one, which was related to graffiti tracker. And to the best of my knowledge, there's no change in the application of the agreement between the city and graffiti tracker. The police department and Public Works work jointly together in relation to identifying graffiti tags in the community. The Public Works Department would typically take a photo of the graffiti before the police department, well, and the police department would come out and take the report. And then they would try to piece together different images of graffiti taken in the community to see if they can identify a common individual in the community who might be associated with that community. And the reason that we do that is so that we can develop the case into a felony case. Because under misdemeanor cases, we get very little traction before the court in relation to misdemeanor cases for graffiti. So by accumulating photographs related to graffiti and identifying them and linking them to a specific individual and associating a certain damage amount, the police department isn't able to react accordingly as far as pursuing a felony case. So it is an important element of the graffiti tracker component that both the city yard and the police department work jointly. And that will continue as far as that particular program goes. Number three, we also agree, it's time for the monument sign to be renovated. And of course, that is moving forward, should the council take action on that issue this evening. Then on D1, the adoption of Resolution Number 24-3458, authorizing the submission of grant for solid waste. We are applying for funding, $250,000, and hope to receive that grant. This is in relation to cleanup underneath the bridge at Hope Boulevard and Mission, I'm sorry, Hope Boulevard. And whether or not, I'm sorry, what? Yeah. And San Antonio Creek Channel. And whether or not we receive the funding from the county, it is something that the city has been working on. In fact, the council approved several months ago, an agreement with a vendor to design the facilities that would go underneath the bridge that we, so that we could make certain that it would no longer be an attractive area for homeless individuals to set up camps under that. Unfortunately, that consultant sort of disappeared. And so we are looking at a new consultant at this point in time that would be also part of this. So again, if the grant comes in, that will be great. If not, the city has always committed to addressing the issues related to that particular location.
All right. Great. Thank you.
Oh, and then I guess there was one other one that was in relation to housing. And why are we building more? Well, we're building more housing because the state has mandated that we build more housing. We're building more housing because California has not built enough housing to accommodate the increase in population in the state. And so as a result of that particular issue, affordable housing is not really available in the state of California. And in order to impact the price of homes, there has to be an increase in the number of homes built. So Montclair, under mandates from the state, as well as the need to simply build more housing to accommodate the growth in residents, is simply something we have to do. And we are making certain that new development that is occurring, occurring in Montclair uses as little water as possible, particularly as it relates to landscaping. The general plan, I think the council will be looking at, will certainly reflect that that is our effort, that we will be in compliance with all of the state laws and mandates related to lowering the use of water. So all new developments, including residential and commercial developments, will have less reliance on potable water. Certainly, no potable water for landscaping, except for residential. We are not authorized to regulate the use of potable water on residential applications at this point in time. But in commercial development, we certainly are able and will do that. As far as residential, we will encourage the installation of drought tolerant landscaping for any projects going forward. And we will certainly work with the existing residents to try and encourage them to install drought tolerant landscaping, working in conjunction with I U A, as indicated earlier by the presentation. They will make grants available to residents who are willing to make that transition. So we will work towards that end, at least as far as addressing the state's mandate that we reduce water, but at the same time, juggling that with the mandate to increase housing development in the community.
All right. Thank you, Ed. Okay, let's go on to, continue on public comment.
Next speaker is Alex.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Alex. And I want to begin by saying that no council member or candidate is requesting, or if I met any of them personally. Also, nothing to do with the previously mentioned flyer. So although I'm not a resident of Montclair, my wife's family has lived here for generations. I have a deep shared interest in the success of the city. I'm here tonight to express my concern and disgust regarding the past actions of Councilman Ben Lopez, as well as his continued denial of the credible claims made against him. In 2022, an independent inspection, investigation found that Mr. Lopez had sexually harassed two city employees. These findings were credible. And as a result, the city council made the decision to formally censure him. And that was not an arbitrary decision, but one based on a thorough investigation conducted by him. Despite all this public information and the fact that his misconduct has been well documented, Mr. Lopez decided to run for reelection. This is deeply troubling and shows not only refusal to take accountability, but also a blatant disregard for the trust of the people of Montclair that they have placed in their elected officials. What makes this situation even more disturbing is that Mr. Lopez has publicly taken an anti-LGBT stance, as actions which involve sexual harassment of male employees suggest a profound hypocrisy. It's possible that Mr. Lopez's disdain of the LGBT community are an attempt to hide his own struggles with his identity, but that does not excuse his actions. The fact that he continues to deny responsibility while presenting himself as the victim is dangerous and damaging to this community. Also ironic that Mr. Lopez candid statement, in that statement, he emphasizes that he did not vote to give himself a raise, as if that demonstrates some type of financial responsibility on the council. I would have preferred he voted for a raise if that meant he didn't sexually harass employees. Additionally, Mr. Lopez claims to be a businessman, yet on his Form 700 filings, it shows that his business hasn't made any income since he's been elected to the city council. Though simply having an LLC doesn't make you a businessman. Given his business's poor performance, it appears that his primary source of income for now is his position on the council, which suggests he may be running for reelection purely for self-preservation and to maintain his income. So Mr. Lopez's arguments against the sexual harassment claims also make no sense. Why would it be in the city's best interest to settle the case if the facts weren't certain? If the allegations were not true, the city would not have spent nearly $1 million to resolve them. So is the best defense really to claim that this is political retribution of four of your fellow council members? But let's be clear. The real victims here are the city employees who were harassed and bravely came forward. Instead of owning up to his actions, Mr. Lopez has deflected blame and tried to rewrite the narrative. His actions have financially burdened the city and the residents, costing nearly $1 million in settlement costs and other related expenses, money that could have gone towards improving this community. So it's been dealing with the consequences of his irresponsible and unethical behavior. It's unacceptable that Mr. Lopez continues to sit on this council without showing remorse and is now seeking reelection for his seat, and despite that all that has come to light. Montclair residents deserve leaders who are honest, respectful, and accountable, and not ones who avoid responsibility and put their own interests ahead of the community. I urge the public to hold him accountable and remember these facts when it comes time to vote. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right.
Is Mrs. Alvarez.
Mrs. Alvarez. There she is. Hello.
My name is Kayla. I'm here today to bring light to this shameful ad that was mailed to the Montclair residents. It was distributed in support of Ms. Denise Johnson and Ms. Carolyn Raft, which slanders the name of Councilman Ben Lopez. Just a few days ago, a concerned neighbor called me to alert me of the disgusting ad that was being mailed to Montclair residents. She was concerned that my children might see it, as I was as well. I've been, I've seen political persecution towards presidential nominees, but I never thought that we would see it in our own community as well. It is shameful. The ad states to vote for integrity. So I ask, where is the integrity in Ms. Johnson and Ms. Raft? Ben Lopez carries a huge cloud over his head that slanders his name, but we have seen his good work in our community. And I urge Montclair residents to remove the blinders, realize that the noise that you hear is demonic. The ad that was shared in the original Montclair Connects page as well, and it was only fueled by the admin claiming that if we speak up against these shameful acts, we would be instantly blocked. This seems like silencing to me. In this note, I ask him to stop and take a pause and reflect of these things, if they were happening to someone in your family, would you be saying these things as well? Mayor Dutry, I hope that you see my righteous indignation. I ask that you firmly oppose these political stunts and you stop the billing of Mr. Councilman. Councilman Ben, keep up the good fight. The Bible tells us that we will be persecuted. John 15:18-19 says, Jesus said, "If the world hates you, know that it hated me before it hated you. If you were of this world, the world would love you as its own. But because you are not of this world, but I choose you out of the world, therefore, the world hates you." The lies that Portefort's wife told against Joseph led to his promotion. Every lie told against you shall work in your favor. We're praying for you, and you have our support.
Thank you. All right. More?
That was it.
That was it? Okay. Then we will now go down to the consent calendar of the agenda. And how about my right? Anybody want to pull anything off my right?
Mr. Mayor, real quickly, item A1.
A1?
A1. And item C, like Charlie, 2, for
C2?
Brief question and comment.
Okay, C2. All right. Anybody else on my right?
Two, yes.
Okay, how about my left?
I just wanted to make a quick comment.
C2 as well? Okay. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to pull item C1 and C4.
C1 and C4. Okay, so we got items again, A1, which is the minutes, C1 was the tracker, C2, which is the cops grant, and C4, which is the Upland SWAT deal. All right, we'll start with item C1, the minutes.
A1, you mean?
I'm sorry, A1.
Okay. Just real briefly, in my comments page, the last page of our packet, 73 of 73, I don't want it to make it seem like I just congratulated and tooted my own father's horn. I did, presently, rather, let's go back. Presently, it states, congratulated his father, Tony Lopez, who will be celebrating his birthday and his unchallenged appointment for a new term as board member for Monavista Water District. I did also include the other two board members in there, and I'd like them to be reflected, congratulating not only Tony Lopez, but Manny Martinez and Sandra Rose.
Okay. Any objections to that? If not, we'll add them as well. All right. So we're off that one. Now we'll go on to the next one, which is item C1, the graffiti.
I just have a quick question, Officer Ventura. So for this graffiti tracker, if I understand correctly, it just takes pictures, correct? So my question is, how often are you able to, generally speaking, because I didn't ask you, generally speaking, how often are you able to catch somebody based on that graffiti?
Well, each case is unique. Often, as the city manager explained, the great thing about graffiti tracker is the ability to aggregate the different. Recently, with the set team being back up and running at full time, they have recently just done a search warrant, which led to an arrest for, we've had, even back in my day, when I supervised that team, tremendous success with graffiti tracker. What it does is it uploads the moniker, it uploads the location, the time. And city yards is pretty quick to abate that stuff to, so that it's out of the public eye. But it's always maintained in that data system so that our graffiti investigators can put together a case that could potentially lead to a search warrant, damage our
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I noticed this happened Wednesday night during the candidate's forum, but the microphones for both the speaker at the podium and up here in the dais keep cutting in and out, and it interrupts the speaker. Can, is there a glitch?
Well, I think the speakers just have to speak into it. I think we back off a little bit appears to be the issue. Is John here a little bit, I'm assuming? But we'll continue on and see how this works out. Okay. Next item is C2, cops.
Was I the only one that pulled it? Okay. Just wanted some clarification. We are, and again, for the public's benefit, we will be receiving a $500,000 award under the 2024 Cops Hiring Program to hire four officers at the, over the course of three years. And after the three-year period, it's required of us to maintain their employment for at least one year. In addition to that, we'll be getting $500,000 in appropriation, rather, from our own Public Safety Grant Fund. And then a balance of $1,072 and change will be coming out of the general safety grant fund, and then a balance of $1,072 and change will be coming out of the general fund. So far, correct, Mr. Starr?
I think the 1.2 million represents a cumulative total of the general fund. Whether or not that also comes out of the public safety grant fund is something we have to determine.
Further confuse me just with that, but I will proceed. In the fiscal impact of our report, starts on page 24, continues on to page 25, I'm under the impression it's three years that they'll be with us, in which case we will get the federal reimbursement money of the $500,000 towards salary. And then the fourth year, we would incur the cost as required. But in the paragraph here, three officers of office, three years, rather, of officer salaries within a five-year period of performance to accommodate time needed for recruitment and hiring. Can you explain to me why the fifth year is thrown in there?
Well, so the grant is for the three years, and it is at a rate of $125,000 for each one of the individuals, but not for each year, but for the entire three years. So if you're hiring four police officers, and the cost of the four police officers is approximately $1.5 million, and the grant is coming up with about $500,000, the city will have to carry the additional cost. The grant does require that after the grant expires, the city does have to continue the employees, the individuals in employment, and we would be committed to doing that. If we don't on any one of the four, then we are probably not eligible for the grant. The issue about the funding is that the report suggests that some of the money will come out of the public safety grant fund, and I just don't know that that is necessarily a practical approach. I understand the department taking that approach, but it's a year-to-year thing. So each year, as we go through the budgeting process, we allocate public safety grant funds for specific line items in the budget. Whether or not there's money left over for personnel costs is something that we would have to be determined on an annual basis. Our experience thus far has been that there has not been public safety grant funds money left over for personnel-related expenditures outside of perhaps maybe overtime. So that's where I'm saying it may have to come out of general fund. Now, your question more specifically is about whether or not we continue the positions for one year or two years. I believe the grant is saying that it needs to be for one year, and the agenda report says that it would be for five years, and that I'm not certain why it states the five years, but the city would certainly work with the department to make certain that we maintain the employees in perpetuity after that. It certainly would not be our intent to let them go after the grant expires. Our anticipation is that the revenues would grow. The city, for new development in North Montclair, has implemented these community facility districts that will bring in additional revenue for public safety-related purposes. So our expectation and hope is that we would continue to maintain these employees, not only specifically for the purposes that the grant allows, but as Montclair Place continues to develop it, it's our anticipation that we will need additional strength in police personnel at that location. So that's another reason why we want to maintain them. Again, I don't know why the report says five years as opposed to four years, but it would be our intent to maintain them in perpetuity.
If we do have them for five years, I believe after the fifth year, they would be vested with us, correct?
Five years, they would be vested in purse.
That's what I was getting at. All right. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you for that.
I may. The Public Safety Grant Fund is a fund that we use to record grants that are applicable to the, to public safety. So that $500,000 that we get from this grant will be recorded in that fund.
Oh, they're not referring to the Prop 1-1?
No.
Okay, that's what I was interpreting it as.
Yeah.
Okay, my mistake.
So then that's why the appropriation will come out of that. It's a fund that we use to record grants for the public safety.
So that's inclusive of all grants, but the primary one has been the Prop 172 funds, and that's the one that I was speaking of.
Yeah.
So since that's the one that has primarily occupied that space, I was interpreting that that's what they were talking about was the 172.
Right, yeah, but this is the grant fund, so it's just where we record grants coming in for public safety.
Okay, all right.
One disbursement then of $500,000, and it'd be transferred into the public safety grant fund.
When we get the money-
That's what we record.
When we get that money from the grant, it'll be recorded in that fund, and that money will either be directly allocated when they do their timesheets, or we will transfer that money back to the general fund to cover costs.
I appreciate you explaining that, because I saw it as two different streams of $500,000, but thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next? My left.
Thank you, Mayor Dutree. So I don't recall if it was last year or the year prior when Mayor Dutree and Mayor Protem Johnson and I traveled to Washington, DC, and we met with the Department of Justice office of, this COPS office, and one of the things, and we explored the various grant opportunities that they had to offer, and one of the things that I took away from that meeting is that these are highly competitive, very infrequently granted opportunities. So a $500,000 grant is incredible, so congratulations. All, thank you.
You have something else on the side of Tanise? Okay, I just wanted to say too, and I know I've been to the COPS office many times along with Bill and I, obviously with Tanise and Carissa two years ago, and so congratulations at the PD, and being successful in this award. And so now I'm going to go to items, where are we? C4, the SWAT team.
I have a question about the SWAT team. I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but it is my understanding, if my memory serves me correctly, we already did this with Upland, and then they ditched us and went somewhere else. And so how do we know that that's not going to happen this time?
Yes, it's a very good question. It was a question that I had asked when conversations, and they first engaged us in rejoining the SWAT team, Mayor Protem. It was, how do I go back to our bosses and the city managers? It's not going to happen again. Obviously, there's no definitive answer that what's in the future, but in my discussions with their SWAT leadership team, their chief with our chief is that they have made a serious investment into their capabilities as a SWAT team, where that didn't exist back in 2008 through '20. When it comes to their equipment, their training, body armor, et cetera, it's a huge investment that the city has made that team's successful. And they've been in existence since about 2020 to 2021, so there is no suggestion that fiscally that would happen again to the city, where they would tell us that they can't maintain the team anymore, that I have seen in the research.
I have one other question, and I may be off track, and you'll correct me, but I seem to recall that when the connection was made and then it was split apart, some of our equipment stayed, I think it ended up in San Bernardino County City somewhere. Is there some assertion that anything that we share with them, if they should decide to split with us again, we bring back everything we took with us?
Yes, each city is responsible for purchasing their own equipment. We may share equipment like the Bearcat or things like that, but it's clear in the MOU as well that anything that we purchase remains with the city.
Outstanding.
Firearms or helmets or whatever the case is.
Thank you very much.
I do want to say though, that it was a funding issue for the city of Pomona, or city of Upland, which is why they ended the program. They did simply have the funds to continue it. So it wasn't that they were intentionally dropping the city of Montclair. They discontinued the program because of a lack of funding.
Okay, Councilman Rue.
My request to speak was related to the last item, and you pretty much covered it. We'd been in Washington several times over the years to talk about the COPS grant, and it is good that we're able to get one. Congratulations to the Police Department, and we'll continue to move forward. Thank you.
Okay, that's all I have on the consent calendar, so we can get a motion?
I'll make a motion for the consent calendar as presented and discussed this evening.
A second. And then obviously noting the change to item A1, the minutes. And we do electronic vote, please. All right. Okay. That looks good. I think what I do is I want to do a five-minute, take a five-minute break here.
I didn't vote.
Who didn't vote? Oh, didn't come up? Which are vote? You're also yes, so it's a 5-0. Carissa votes yes. Do you have everybody else? Want to try once more? No. All in favor, just, we'll do this, make it easy. All in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion is adopted, 5-0. So let's take a five-minute break. Okay, let's get back to the meeting. Okay, so we'll now go to communications, and I'm going to start with Marcia.
Great, good evening, Mayor, city council members. I just have a couple updates to give. We have our Montclair Lights On After School event this Thursday, October 24th. It's from 6:30 to 8:00 PM in our community center. It's a nationwide celebration of programs that extend beyond the regular school day, and this year, we will be celebrating our 25th anniversary of providing after-school programs to the Ontario Montclair School District. This year's theme is Map is Major League. The event will focus on American history through a study of America's favorite pastime, baseball.
Rogers.
Yes. Other activities will include a display of student projects and performances, awards, games, opportunity drawings, and more. And the second event is our City of Montclair Halloween Spooktacular. It will be held this Saturday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM inside the Montclair Place Mall. The hunting event will include trick-or-treating, kids' crafts, carnival-style games, a costume contest, a live DJ, and other ghoulish surprises for the whole family. And don't miss the inflatable spooky haunted maze for those brave souls who wish to enter. And our popular Halloween costume contest, judged by our Community Activities Commission, will begin at 7:30. It will be on the main stage at Centre Court with contestants howling for the title of most scariest, most cutest, most unique, and best in family in age-appropriate categories, zero to six years and seven to 12 years old. The best in family category is for two or more family members, all ages dressed in a theme. This event is free, thanks to our sponsors this year, who include Montclair Place, Burt Tech, West Coast Arborists, and the Women's Club of Montclair.
Okay, thank you very much. Police Department. There he is.
Mayor, city council, city staff, the city mayor, Mr. Starr. On Thursday, October 31st, from 6:00 to 9:00 on Halloween, we're going to be doing a trick-or-treat in the police department lobby. So we ask community members if they're in the area or they're driving by to stop by and see our very own Officer Calvio. He does a great job. The lobby's very festive. If you haven't been in there, I'm sure most have not been in there, but we welcome everybody to come by, get some candy, take some photos, and share some experience.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, so we have now the city attorney.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mine's not quite as exciting as the previous two announcements, but just asking that the council meet in closed session regarding real property negotiations regarding the matter indicated in the agenda. I have nothing else this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. City manager?
All items, other than to say that Diane was right, hers wasn't exciting.
Well, yours is less exciting, because you didn't say anything. Okay, I have a couple items. Quickly, I attended the League of California Cities Conference that was held in Long Beach this past week, sat on several different sessions. I sat on three different sessions just on homelessness alone, so I feel like I'm getting myself a little more educated on the subject. Obviously, it's a very complicated subject to deal with, but I'm happy with the exposure and the information that came through from those three sessions. Just want to congratulate the Seroptimist International of the Inland Valley of Montclair. They had a nice, successful casino event here in Montclair last Saturday. And then I'll be absent from some of the programs just mentioned. I'll be in Dallas, and then I'm going to Las Vegas to see families of both locations, so I'll be gone for the next seven days, starting Wednesday. So I want to start with Councilmember Bill Rue.
Yes, I'll start off where you had talked about that Seroptimist event was very, very well-done. Good event, lots of people turned out. It was a fun evening. It was a casino night, but more importantly, it was an opportunity to just build friends and raise money for the Seroptimist Inland Valley and the good work that they're doing across the region. I was able to attend the Assembly Select Committee hearing, which was held right in these chambers last week. It was conducted by Assemblymember Chris Holden. It talked about transportation in the region. It, of course, included the Gold Line. It included Bright Line. It included the Ontario Airport. It included buses, whether you are in the LA area or the San Bernardino County area. It was made pretty clear that in transportation, it's meshed together. We need cars, we need heavy rail, we need light rail, we need buses. They all play a role, and eliminating one is not going to solve the problem with another. They blend together. If you take the train, as I do, and I will be doing next week at something, you still oftentimes need a car to get- you still oftentimes need a car to get from one place to another. It's not always easy to call a Lyft or an Uber. But let's not look at each one being mutually exclusive, let's look at them as being tied together. It was interesting, because the first meeting Assemblyman Holden ever held on the Gold Line was in Pasadena. The last one he's holding is here in Montclair, so he pretty much bookended the lines, and that was very, very good. I want to acknowledge one of our Montclair Seroptimists, although she does not live in the city of Montclair, and that's Mrs. Judy Westbrook, whose husband passed away. Judy's been very, very active with the Seroptimist for many years, as is her mother Cathy Kinley. Many of you know Cathy was on the Chaffey High School Board for quite a number of years and did an outstanding job there. In history, I noted the passing, and it's not a Montclair resident, but this is a part of American history. John Kinsell Senior passed away at 107 years old on his reservation in Oklahoma. He was one of the last Navajo code talkers. There are only two remaining. Their history's been written down, it's been covered in movies and books. Please read about it. His tribal leader, Buu, B-U-U, N-G-U-Y-E-N, Buu Nguyen, who leads the tribe, talked about how respected he was and how proud the younger people are, even to this day, of what he did during the Second World War. So just remember that when we talk about history, let's think about all of history with this. I wanted to comment on the candidate's form and some misinformation there, but I will simply say one, I do not like negative campaigning, period. We really don't have a history of it in this community, and we shouldn't. The people who do that are clearly not focusing on the issues. There are a lot of issues we can focus on. I'll just name one of them. Proposition 13. Proposition 13 has the potential to be taken away by the legislature or by the voters, and we need to support and protect it. And I think when a candidate meets you at the door, or you have a chance to talk to them, ask them how they feel about Proposition 13. Eat it, it protects us. A lot of seniors would be out of their home, a lot of us would be out of our homes, period. It takes a two-thirds vote to raise taxes, and it really, I really don't like the runarounds that have been done on it, where we mask a tax as really a fee. We need to start looking at this, because our residents can't afford it. You live in Montclair, a family of four needs $140,000 to buy a home. A median household income is $58,000. More than 20% of our residents are at or below the poverty line, that's why we need Prop 13. And I know there's a lot of people who wanna get rid of it. And I've heard, well, Bill, then we can just raise the property taxes where it needs to be. Well, do that in a city with the rich, not here. Our working-class families deserve better. And, you know, we can go and pursue all the gentrification we want with high-end stores selling salads at $15. We can go and build all the luxury homes we want, it doesn't change the fact that that's gentrification. Our families need Prop 13 to prevent bad things from happening to them, and they can keep their homes. Anybody who receives the property tax bill can look at it and know why it's necessary. So I was gonna comment on the candidate's form and other things, but I won't tonight. Just remember, Prop 13 is necessary, and ask every candidate running if they will protect and defend Prop 13, and if they're elected, hold them to it. Thank you.
Councilmember Lopez.
The answer to that question, Bill, is yes, I would vote to protect it, so I'm on record. I also attended Saturday, October 19th, here at the community center, the Seroptimist International Casino Night. This is their, I don't know how many years there is the annual event, but it's several in the run, in the running. And it is a well-attended event and very well-organized. So to anyone that was involved with the tables, running the games, the dinner, the cooking, for those that cooked that night, thank you so much. The food was great, and you slaved over those hot stoves to provide some delicious food. Your work is not amiss with me. But the money that is raised goes to a very good cause that Seroptimists do, helping youth with, I believe, scholarship funds, a whole series and gamut of things that they do, that they reinvest that money into. So it's not an organization that just sits on the money they collect, they dole it out. They actually help people in this community, both Montclair, Ontario, and maybe other regions on the outskirts. But kudos to them, it was a fun event, especially the infamous Wheel of Fortune Wheel, where you can spin the wheel for $5 and win a prize. But I guess perhaps the most entertaining or the most memorable thing of that night was my colleague Bill Rue's outfit that night. I told him when I saw him, he looked like Rod Roddy, Rod Roddy from The Price is Right. But I didn't realize he had that in his closet. Now, I would dare him to wear it at a council meeting. That would be interesting, but nonetheless, the lights would be...
I had that from another casino night.
Okay. But nonetheless, it was a great time by all, I thoroughly enjoyed it. And just on a side note, I'm not gonna get into the weeds on things, so those of you that come to my defense since Saturday, thank you so much. The texts, the calls, the individuals that expressed concern, very much appreciated. It's good to know that folks, good to be loved and appreciated, and know that my work that I have done isn't overshadowed by accusations. So thank you for that. And as I've told many people, God's still on the throne, I keep moving forward as best I can. But thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Paul Tim Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several items, but I'll try to talk quick in the interest of time. So I wanna talk about the casino night. I am a Seroptimist, and I just wanted to elaborate on what the Seroptimists do. So the casino night is our largest fundraiser of the year. And what we do with the money that we earned is that we give scholarships to women who are single moms, who are head of household, who did not have an opportunity to finish their education. So we try to help them with their education so that they can support their family in the way that they think is most appropriate. Secondarily, we recognize women and/or girls who have had a profound impact on this community. And most of the people who are professional women get certificates and plaques and such. But the younger folks, the students, they actually get money. So for example, at one of our award ceremonies, the young girl who runs the food pantry for the homeless students at Montclair High School got $1,000 from us to continue the work that she's doing there. And then the thing that's the most near and dear to my heart is that we heard that when children in San Bernardino County, for some reason, have to be quickly subtracted from their household, and they have to go into foster care. So with those children, when they are taken from their homes, they're taken to the Children's Assessment Center in the city of San Bernardino County, and we had the opportunity, the Seroptimists had the opportunity, to go and tour that facility, and they showed us like all of the medical exam rooms, because you don't know what kind of trauma they had. It could be physical abuse, or mental abuse, or whatever was going on in their family. But most importantly, when they come there, they come with nothing but just the clothes on their back. And so if you think, you know, if you've ever known somebody who's in foster care, they don't always stay in one place for the rest of, until they're 18. They kinda pop around, and from each place they go, they go to one place, they have nothing but the clothes on their back. And then when they go to the next place, they have nothing but the clothes on their back. But one of the stories that we heard about a little girl who was brought to the Assessment Center when she was seven years old. And she, they had some trouble finding a place for her, because there weren't available parents. And so she had to stay for a period of time at the Assessment Center. And after a few days, this little seven-year-old girl started, you know, she started asking Stafford if they could help her. And they really, she didn't really, they didn't really understand what she meant. What she really was asking for was a clean pair of underwear. So this little seven-year-old girl was finally placed, and they followed her through elementary, middle, and high school. But before she left the Assessment Center, they gave her a blanket, 'cause that was gonna be hers. She could take it wherever she wanted, to whichever house she wanted, that she went to. So they gave her this blanket, and she went on with her life, but they followed her. She's now in her twenties. She has two little girls of her own. She works in the marketing department at the Children's Assessment Department, and she still has the blanket that she was given when she was seven years old. And so what are we doing? We're making blankets, lots and lots of them. So so far, the Seroptimists have donated over 600 blankets to the Children's Assessment Center. All of us individually have stacks of blankets that we need to start getting done. There's also lots of other people that do it, some do it in conjunction with the Seroptimists, like the Montclair High School students. Interestingly, more boys come to that blanket event than the girls, but they, Montclair High School students do it, some people at the seniors' center do it. Sometimes the Seroptimists get together in one group, and we all make, you know, 100 at one time. But again, all of us have a stash of fabric that we're supposed to be working on as we can. And all of that fabric costs money. So for those people who went to the casino night, I hope they really do understand that every single penny that was earned at that event comes back to women and girls. So that's my comment about the casino event. Oh, one last thing, I think there were over 200 gifts for the spin the wheel. So if you paid $5 for one spin, the cheapest gift you could have gotten was for $50, excuse me, $15. But there were things in there that were close to $100, you know, big griddles and all kinds of stuff. So it was a fun time had by all, and I was privileged to be a part of it. So at the casino event, I was pretty perplexed, because a few people were asking me about some mailer that I'd sent, and I was confused, 'cause I haven't sent any mailer recently that would be delivered. And so, but I realized, after I got home and found it myself, the mailer was paid for by Montclair families and businesses for good government. I'm not sure who that is, I don't know how many people are involved in that organization, or if there's only one. But here's what I know with absolute certainty, I wasn't. Nobody asked for my opinion to put my name on that flyer, nobody showed it to me, nobody talked to me. And it kinda reminded me of an experience that I had back in 2020, where somebody that I did not know posted something ugly about one of the council, the people who was running for council. And I didn't know why I got it. Why did they choose me to post that on my social media pages? And in fact, back then in 2020, I called the person who was being, who had negative information. I called the person, and I said, listen, I wanna tell you that this is what was posted on my page. I didn't do it, I've hidden it, so nobody else can see it, but I want you to know, candidate that's running with me, I want you to know that I'm running a clean campaign. That's all, I'm the only person I'm focusing on is my own self or my own campaign. I'm not slinging any mud, and I'm not doing anything negative. So for the folks, this Montclair families and business for good government, that's their issue, not mine. And I didn't ask to have my name on that, and I didn't approve to have my name on that. So that's all I wanted to say about that mailer. But I have a few other things that I wanna talk about quickly. I was very privileged to attend the Oak Park Sensory Garden Open House and Ribbon Cutting. I don't know if you know what that is, I just kinda learned about it. But there is on, on Mona Vista Avenue, right next to DeVita, there is an Oak Park facility, and I'm, we're all very familiar with the Oak Park facility on Vernon. But the one on Mona Vista is for people who have more medical needs. And so they have created this beautiful sensory garden for people who can't go to the park. So we kinda take for granted, we can just hop in the car and go to Stater Brothers, or we can go to the park or do whatever we want. But those people don't have that opportunities. So it's a sensory garden, so that there's places where they can touch things that have sound, there are things that's for sound, there are things that they can taste. There's like, you know, all kinds of things for them to do, and they're, these are people who are wheelchair-bound and have a great deal of difficulties, but it's a special little island of tranquility for them. So kudos to Oak Park for opening the sensory garden. And then I also wanna talk about Anthesis. They had their annual, they had their annual dinner here recently, that I was fortunate enough to attend and accept some awards on behalf of the city of Montclair. So in their brochure, there's quite the write-up for Anthesis. And it says, as an honoree for Business Partner for the Year, the city of Montclair. In June of 2016, Anthesis and the city of Montclair began a partnership with three individuals with developmental disabilities working at the Montclair Police Department. Along with their job coach, the participants have been well-accepted and are considered part of the overall team. This enclave provides janitorial and portering services at the police headquarters, maintaining areas both inside and outside, including offices, evidence room, and in the jail. Employment at the police department has provided the individuals with a sense of belonging and an important component of our community. In 2018, the Montclair Police Department received an Excellence in Employment Award for the California Disability Services Association for recognizing the value of hiring persons with developmental disabilities. So that was what was in the program. And we also received from the California State Assembly, a certificate presented to the city of Montclair, Anthesis Annual Dinner Business Partner of the Year. On behalf of the California State Assembly, thank you for your dedicated commitment and great contributions. Your leadership is invaluable to the community, best wishes for your continued success. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. And we also received a certificate from Supervisor Kurt Hagman's office, and it says Certificate of Recognition Awarded to the city of Montclair, Business Partner of the Year, and honored to your dedication and support of Anthesis and its mission to support independent and inclusive lives for adults with disabilities through employment and community integration. We wish you continued success.
All right, thank you.
And this one is from California Legislative Assembly. City of Montclair, Business Partner of the Year. On behalf of the 53rd Assembly District, it is my honor to offer my sincerest congratulations on receiving the Business Partner of the Year 2024. Supporting the mission of Anthesis to support independent and inclusive lives for adults with disabilities through employment and community integration. Not going unnoticed, I wish you continued success in the future.
All right. Well, thank, anything else?
One more thing.
One more thing. Your ten is already in.
Yeah, well, I need to give it to you. Or I'll give it to you. There is an envelope somewhere in this packet that says City of Montclair, and so I opened it. No, this is not it. I opened it, but actually it was addressed to you, Mayor Dupree, and it's a gift card in there. I'll find it and get it to you. That's, that's all I had to say about Anthesis. I also, as you all know, this, the annual food and toy drive is quickly upon us. And so the Chamber of Commerce has reached out to every single business in the city of Montclair to either have them host a box or do a donation. And so two of the companies sent us contributions. They were, they were made out to the Chamber of Commerce, but we really know that they're for the city of Montclair. So I have two checks, I was gonna mail it, but I thought I'd just bring it over here. One is from the gas company, which is for $1,100, it's for $1,150. And then the other one, that one's from the gas company, and the other one is for $100 that came from ProPhoto. So even though they weren't able to host a donation box, but they sent us money. And then I also wanna talk about the caution cleanups that we just had. Fantastic, there were so many people there. It was interesting to see, oh, here's this, here, there's it. It was interesting to see all of us, when we just came, and we were all, you know, excited in our little shirts and our little outfit, and we all left there looking like, filthy, looking like we had been beat down somewhere. So there was a whole lot of work done. But the thing that, the thing that touched my heart the most is the residents, after a while, they start peeking out the window, and then they were bringing us little drinks and goodies. I think somebody made Aqua Frescas and brought it out to us. So they really did show their appreciation. But one of the things I heard, which I believe to be true, but I didn't like it, I believe to be true, is I believe Mr. Director Diaz, who had just, he and some of his team had cleaned out a bunch of stuff, and he said, it'll be back like that in a week, and I was like, that's terrible. So, but I believe that that's, you've had that experience, I believe that to be true. So my question going forward, if we can do caution cleanups more often, and I know that's not an agenda item, so we're not gonna discuss it tonight, but I really would like to see us, I think the last one I went to was almost a year ago, maybe there have been more since then. It would be nice... On Marion?
Yeah, it was six months ago, six months ago, there was one, yeah.
Well, I didn't know about that one. Oh, there you go. Well, I actually, I'm hoping, and we'll have, I need to have some conversations with City Manager Starr, and perhaps we can make it an agenda item on another meeting. I really would like to see those caution cleanups happen every couple of months, just rolling around the city, so that we can keep everything clean. That might be it, somehow I think I missed something.
Okay, Councilmember Martinez.
Well, I am saddened to announce the passing of Mark Yocum. He is the son of Sue and Al Yocum. Sue Yocum retired from the city of Montclair in 2006 as the Assistant Director of Human Services, and is currently a case manager in our senior center. She's also a professor in the Gerontology Department at Chaffey College and a dedicated member of the Women's Club of Montclair. Her husband Al is retired from the city of Ontario, he worked in wastewater management... He worked in wastewater management. Their son, Mark, passed away last week on Wednesday. He was 59 years old and married with two daughters. He lived on the island of Oahu and was an avid surfer and worked as a photographer. He will be missed, and I ask that tonight, we adjourn the meeting in his memory.
Yeah, so whether it will adjourn the meeting, adjourn the meeting's memory, yes. Before you go, anything else of Ms. Martinez? Go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, I knew I had one other thing. So because of the flyer that went out, people have been asking me a lot of questions, and I don't have the answer. I don't, I don't know how to answer their questions, and so I'm hoping that tonight, just because residents want to know if either City Manager Starr or Attorney Robbins would just kind of give us an overview of where we're at.
Is that a question for the City Attorney? Go ahead.
Where we're at in the...
In the pending litigation.
The litigation?
The questions I've been asked is, well, how much has it cost? How much do we think it's going to cost? How come it's only one case? Did somebody drop a case? What happened?
Well, there were, there are two lawsuits, one filed by Mr. Fuentes and one filed by Mr. Garcia, and the defendants in that complaint are the City of Montclair and Mr. Lopez. The city settled the case with the two plaintiffs, Mr. Garcia and Mr. Lopez. So the city is not involved any longer as a defendant in the complaint, but the city also filed a cross-complaint against Mr. Lopez, reimbursed the city for the costs it has incurred in connection with the lawsuit. That would include the settlement to the two plaintiffs, and it would include the defense costs that the city has incurred. And I think there was an agenda report back four, six months ago or so, where the city had calculated what the costs were, and my recollection, I didn't pull that out, was it was somewhere in excess of $700,000 between the payment to the two plaintiffs and the defense costs that have been incurred by the city. So the cross-complaint is still pending in the two lawsuits against Mr. Lopez, and the plaintiffs are still pursuing in their case against Mr. Lopez. The city had settled that part, but the two plaintiffs, that, that matter is still pending, as well as the city's cross-complaint. You asked about one lawsuit. There are two. The city did file a motion to consolidate the two cases, because it made sense for judicial efficiency and economic efficiency as well, that instead of having two different trials, that there would be one trial. While the two plaintiffs are different individuals, of course, the defendants are the same, the city is the same, Lopez is the same. So the city filed the motion to consolidate, and the court did grant that. So the two lawsuits have been combined into one. So I don't know if that answers your question on that. It's set to go to trial sometime in 2025, mid-2025 status on that.
I will certainly refer them to...
Okay, so we just spent a good half an hour on public comments. I just remind my council colleagues again, let's try to make it a little more briefer on our council communication. I think I sent an email out a couple weeks ago, what the Brown Act allows for, for discussion on the, on the agenda without, if there's no item on the agenda. If John is out there, can you please check the mics and see what's going on? I know Diane was also having some problems, too, was cutting out Diane as well, so John can check into that.
Mr. Mayor, we are looking into that. It's a Bi-Amp issue. It's already being diagnosed, and the parts have been ordered to fix it.
Okay, so there is a, there is a material issue. Okay, equipment issue, excuse me. All right, so we're going to go into a closed session. Again, we'll adjourn this meeting in memory of Mark Yocum, passing at 59. Thank you.